All right, I have seven, Tina, do you?
I do.
All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Woburn Planning Board to order, please. Before the meeting begins, I'd like, if possible, you to silence your cell phones and note that this meeting is being recorded. Karen, could you call the roll, please?
Callahan.
Yeah.
Bob Doherty.
Here.
Kevin Donovan. Absent, Dave Edmonds.
Yeah.
Mike Ventreska, absent. Carolyn Turner.
Here.
Chair Claudia Bogdan.
Here. First on the agenda under subdivision approval, I'm sorry, subdivision approval not required plans are ninety-three Forest Park Road and zero Callahan Drive lots three and four.
Yes, Chairman and members of the board and audience, we have one A and R this evening. It's for the lots at the properties just mentioned by the chair. In essence, what's happening in summary is that the lot on Forest Park Road is deeding a small portion of its rear yard to both lots three and four, or lots three A and four A as showed on the plan. All of the lots will have frontage on either Callahan Drive or Forest Park Road. In fact, the frontages are not changing at all, and the plan itself meets approval for endorsement with with one recommendation. I will be recommending that you and recommend that you vote to endorse the plan as an A and R, but not before the applicant adds. I believe there's an easement that runs through this land on, at least it appeared to be so, on GIS. I don't see it here, and this engineering firm does a great job typically of doing their research, but I would like to confirm whether or not there is an easement, and if there is an easement traversing the property should be added to the A and R plan. So I'd recommend, if you're comfortable, a conditional endorsement that would authorize the chair or the vice chair to sign the plan after the easement has been added, if in fact, an easement is found to exist.
All right, thank you. That is the recommendation of the Planning Board Director. Are there any questions from the board?
Motion to accept the Director's recommendation.
All right, motion by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Five in favor, none opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda under public hearings, we have a continued public hearing for forty-three Pool Street definitive subdivision plan, and the applicant is forty-three Pool Street Counselor, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. Again, welcome for the record attorney, James Giuliani, on behalf of forty-three Pool Street LLC. I know we have a few members not present. I would probably ask the board, but I think it's probably in our best interest and maybe the board's best interest to continue while all the qualifying members are here. We can do a presentation and allow one of the members to qualify, but I think it may be just more efficient if he's here. There were a good amount of points that we wanted to respond to that we did tackle while we had our hiatus of a couple of weeks from last meeting. So we, I would ask the board, we can do a presentation and answer those comments from the last meeting, or we can just push it off if the board feels like it's more efficient to just have that one qualifying member here, so.
All right. Well, I think it is, from the board's point of view, the same, because the member who is not here, Kevin Donovan, who can still qualify himself, would have to review. It's really just a question of reviewing five minutes or however long your presentation is. So it is it is up to you, whatever you feel you would like to do is fine with the board.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just always better in person. I think it's probably more efficient if Mr. Donovan has any questions and things like that. I think that's probably more important. You know, assuming he qualifies, again, you know, we don't know the future, so I always like to side, you know, err on the side of caution.
All right. Well, under those circumstances, again, that is completely completely up to you. I would open the public hearing and ask anyone who came here for this hearing to speak if they would like, and then if the board so chooses, continue the matter either to our twenty-eighth meeting or with respect to what the planning. The, I hear that the Planning Board Director would want to continue this to our December twelfth meeting, is that right? So.
I would just ask respectfully if we, I think we are prepared now, but I think if we we would be prepared for the twenty-eighth, but again, I don't want to step on your toes, but I think we could be ready for the twenty-eighth if if the board would be willing to to meet that.
Okay, well, that would be, we'll listen to the public who'd like to speak today and then ask the Planning Board Director for her recommendation, and then the board will move the matter.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. If there was anyone in the audience that wished to speak either in favor or opposed to the application, it is appropriate for you to come forth right now, tell us your name and address, and tell us what you would like to say. Hello, sir, welcome.
Good evening, Scott McCarthy, forty-one Pool Street. Sorry, I just walked in, I just came from work, so I apologize if I missed anything or if you guys covered this already. I know there was originally twelve variants that they were looking for, and now it's down to five. Still think that's five too many. It seems like it's like three of them come down to like footage, where they're trying to get fifty feet, you know, it's supposed to be fifty feet, and then it's forty feet, twenty-four feet instead of twenty-six feet, curbs on one side, not the other. So it just seems that it's, we're trying to put five pounds of sand in a two-pound bag. Excuse me. Another thing that I'm really worried about is the blasting. I know originally it said significant blasting, and now it said shouldn't need blasting. So I would like to hear no blasting. I don't, I know people in the North Woburn, people that were close to that development in North Woburn, cracks in the foundation, cracks in the walls, definitely don't want that in my house. So that's all I have right now.
Could we ask you to sign the sign-in sheet?
Absolutely.
There should be a pen as well.
Oh, I apologize, I should have included that in my announcement.
I had you back.
I appreciate that, Tina, thank you. And sir, just to let you know, the meeting is likely to be continued at the applicant's request, and that is because one of our members is not here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, is there anybody else who would like to come forward and speak to us tonight? All right, I do not see, oh, come, so at this point, are there any questions for the applicant from the board? If not, I would ask the Planning Board Director for her recommendation.
Sure. So we, right now on the calendar that was agreed to at the beginning of the year, you've got two meetings scheduled between now and the end of the year, November twenty-eighth and December twelfth. My recommendation was going to be to continue this public hearing to the twelfth, because if we continued it to the twenty-eighth, we have a deadline that we ask that revised plans be submitted no later than seven days before the board meeting. So they would have seven days to make any revisions, but only seven days to make the revisions and get us back a revised plan. Obviously, if it was the twelfth, they'd have a more leisurely pace to do that. Besides the mechanics of revising a plan, what I see is the outstanding issues at the moment are the following. The pavement radii were added to the sheet, but what we'd asked for was the diameter of the pavement of the cul-de-sac, the diameter being added to the plans. So the engineer put down the radii instead of the diameter, so we still need that information They submitted an operation and maintenance plan, and that had a couple of sentences about dust control. The engineering department has said that they've recognized it being incorporated, but I would like to have the DPW and the inspector of, Inspection Services Director, review that and offer comments, because those are the other two departments that often get involved in those kinds of matters. Fire Department, they've reached out a couple of times to get some feedback from the fire department. Through no fault of the fire departments, there was a delay in getting them a plan that showed the turning radii for their trucks, but we haven't yet heard definitively from that department. That remains to be done. The engineering department reviewed an inspection of the sewer main, which they did between the last meeting and now, and I believe engineering has found that survey and the results to be very acceptable, but I'm not asked, I don't know if DPW has seen it and feels similarly comfortable. I know that DPW had raised an issue at one point of concern about drainage heading to the down gradient portion of the system in Winter Road. The applicant has, I think, call it a correction, believes that the drainage is actually, or says that the drainage is actually running toward the cul-de-sac, which is not what the DPW director concluded. So I would like to have an opportunity for the DPW director to get the new information and confirm for me that he's right, that he's confirmed, and agrees with the design engineer. Don't think we've heard yet from Public Works on the fire flow test results. And then the other two points are not necessarily points of something that they need would need to do between now and the next meeting, but I do want to mention two things. They added a crosswalk, as was requested, across Winter Street, but I want to point out that someone has raised since then that installing that crosswalk will also require that you put in the ADA accessible ramps at either end of that. So that's a little of additional scope, and I wanted to recognize and call out for you. And then lastly, in that vein, there was a comment made about the existing water and sewer lines in the existing portion of Winter Road have to be at least ten feet apart. And the question was raised that they may not be ten feet apart. And then an observation was made that they're pretty close, they might be ten feet apart. And so so far, the applicant doesn't know what to do with that particular comment. If it is within ten feet, it's an existing condition. But clarity, at least from the engineering department, which would recommend to you that if there isn't ten feet of distance between the two, that you condition approval on requiring them to create the ten feet of distance. Whether you would do that, I don't know. Whether the DPW would agree that that's necessary, I don't know. I've not followed up with them on that. But I see those as the pending issues. With luck, they could all be addressed, I'm sure, within a week, but somebody's out or there's a difficulty reaching somebody, it might take longer than that. So to be safe and to ensure that the next time we meet, we have everything, I would have recommended December twelfth.
Okay. So it sounds to me like the the one thing that the applicant can do is to get the pavement radii, I'm sorry, the pavement diameter on the plan. Now, is that something that you would want done before we send plans to all of the folks in the City Hall that need to to see them?
No, I would think that that's just something that the board would want to have on the plan. Well, we want it on the plan in advance so that we can check and ensure that it meets the rules and regs.
Okay.
I think that it does by scale, but we need to have the exact measurement to confirm.
I see. So what I'm hearing, Counselor, is that City Hall departments have yet to answer some of these questions, and in Tina's experience, it might take longer than between now and the twenty-eighth to get them to answer these questions, especially with the Thanksgiving holiday. I'm imagining that is not helpful. So it is going to be up to the board as to which date you would like to continue it to, but those are the the pros and the cons. So that said, Bob.
I would like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to December twelfth, because I would like to have all that answered before we sit down again and try to address the situation. And, you know, in two weeks, we could be hearing that we're still waiting for somebody to get back to us, and therefore, it's just going to delay it even longer. So I'll make the motion to continue it to the December twelfth.
All right, there's a motion by Bob on the table, is there a second?
And that was for seven PM, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second by, second by Jim, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would call for a vote, please. All those in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five in favor, none opposed, that motion passes. We will see you on December twelfth here, in person, at seven PM.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Indeed, you too. Next.
Claudia?
Yes.
Should I have abstained on that vote?
Should you have abstained on that vote?
Probably.
Probably.
We'll mark you as an abstention. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Good, good, good call, good catch.
Down there, that was the catch.
Yeah, okay, all righty. Next, under public hearings, zero Marcy Street definitive subdivision plan. The petitioner is Commonwealth Realty Foundation LLC and Cummings Properties LLC.
Good evening.
I'm going to turn the computer.
Certainly, in the meantime, can you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, certainly. Good evening, my name is Michael Laveney, I'm an architect with Cummings Properties, representing Commonwealth Realty Foundation on behalf of the Cummings Foundation. With me this evening is Mark Slager, he's a principal at Allen Engineering. And I'd like to be able to call this up so I can.
Yeah, sure, take it, take a minute.
Thank you.
All right, whenever you're ready, please start the presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having us. Again, I'm Michael Laveney with Cummings Properties. We are seeking to construct a single-family structure on a lot in an R-two zoning district on the, at the end of, at the end of Marcy Street, as you can see here. Why we're here is Marcy Street, we need to extend the pavement on Marcy Street so we can get the front, the proper frontage. There are also some waivers that we're requesting that we'll discuss as we go through this. So this slide is basically the subject property that's highlighted in yellow. And that that first slide was also the, one of the two plans that you got that were, that were part of this project. This is the second sheet that has a little more of the the details on it. What's highlighted here is, again, the lot's highlighted in yellow, the lot is over thirteen thousand square feet, so it it's big enough to qualify for a single-family home in the R-two zoning district. This also highlights the utilities. Basically, all the utilities are in the road are existing. The road stops right here now, and we were just going to extend the water in the sewer onto the site from there, as highlighted in green. This slide is the same slide as the first one, just happens to show the buildable area on the lot. So we take this now and we, you know, go back to this one, hey, that's, that shows the whole neighborhood, here we are. This is pretty much the lot that we're talking about. In general, what we're looking to do is to extend Marcy Street right here in the green and build a single, single-family structure here to the, to the, to the west side of the lot. That's where the proposed driveway would line up, pretty close to the existing driveway across, across the way. And we would extend the road just as far as we have to extend it, so that, you know, the, we could have the proper frontage. At that point, we would install a gate and a, and a gravel driveway so that the fire department could get their apparatus through in the event that they had to come down here and not turn their vehicles around. So this is, this is the package that's in front of the board, really, this evening. What we'd like to do, when again, we're talking about the waivers, you know, we'd like to build the, extend the road, very similar to what it is now. Let me just go back to. So, so you can see in the gray, this is the road right here, and it's basically a driveway right now that serves this one house on two Marcy Street, is the only house that it serves at this point in time. So it's an existing forty-foot right-of-way, we're looking for a waiver so that, because it's, I guess, if you're building a new subdivision today, it needs to be fifty. You know, right now, there are no sidewalks on any of these streets, so we'd like to not construct sidewalks on, in front of that piece that we're building. The water main already comes here, so we're not going to extend it, we're just going to tie into the existing water main, so we'd like to leave it there. There are no streetlights in this area, so we thought we'd not put one in, but that's certainly subject to discussion. Again, there is no curbing on any of these streets, so we thought we'd just leave it just the way it is. And then we were looking to not construct a cul-de-sac again. This is a driveway, right, it basically acts as a driveway right now. Delivery vehicles come in and they come out the same way. Don't think extending the road seventy feet, seventy-five feet will make much of a difference there. So again, this is what we're looking at. After hearing some of the comments from the city departments, we said, okay, well, maybe if somebody wanted to discuss the, the cul-de-sac or a turnaround, it's possible that we could accommodate it here. What we'd do is we'd have to extend, instead of going seventy-five feet, it'd probably be closer to a hundred feet, just to get to the point where we could turn this, build this turnout here, so that it's not really in these people's, you know, living room. And again, then we just put the gate there and extend the gravel to the pavement. You know, alternatively, if the fire department, and again, I just want to go back to, you know, this, this one here. I had met with the fire department on the site back in March when we started talking about this project, or maybe in the spring, and they were fine with this configuration. They felt like, okay, as long as they could get their fire trucks through, they'd be fine with it. So, you know, this was the, the next alternative after talking about, I met with the planning director about, okay, really, they might be looking for something like this. Alternatively, if the fire department feels that they could turn their trucks, their apparatus around here, we could eliminate the gate and the cut through to Henshaw Street, that would be fine, too. We'd be happy with that if the board and everybody felt like that was a desirable solution. Alternatively, if all else failed and the board felt that, felt strongly about it, we could extend it right to Henshaw Street and extend Marcy Street right to Henshaw Street, and that would solve all the challenges of gates and cul-de-sacs and turnoffs, and perfectly acceptable to us. This project was in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals back in September, and prior to that, I went and visited some of the neighbors, and their biggest concern was not having this extend through. So, and again, that's not our, our desire either. We started with, we started, we started with this, and, you know, we understand that, but there are challenges to this, and if they're unsurmountable at this point in time, we could go right to that, and it would work just fine. We're seeking to build a single-family house in a single-family neighborhood. These are all single-family homes here. So there's one street on the, one house on the street, we're looking to add another one.
Okay.
If it's that simple, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Jim?
Yes, could you tell me the width of, the width of the drive, if it was extended to Henshaw Street to the asphalt line, from where you ever proposed?
It'd be twenty-six feet.
Twenty-six additional feet.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, from, from.
From the right-hand edge of your green highlighted?
Yeah, right there.
Driveway beyond the gate.
Yeah, it'd probably be about thirty, I'm sorry, from here to here, it'd be about thirty feet or so.
Thirty feet. And have you looked at a cul-de-sac to meet the fifty-foot requirement?
Yeah, well, the cul-de-sac would wind up being somewhere in here.
Okay.
It'd be probably a little big for this.
Or a hammerhead?
Yeah, again, we looked at, when we, we started talking about this, we thought that if we were going to do this, maybe the turnout would be the most, the least intrusive solution. And again, we originally started, the fire department was fine with, you know, again, I know that we learned subsequently that there's, maybe it's delivery trucks and stuff that might be challenged by this, but at twenty-six foot wide, they should also, they, you know, they, either they come in now or, and back out, or they back down the street. They could certainly do a three-point turn, but we just felt like the hammerhead or cul-de-sac probably would not be the best solution.
Refresh my memory, Henshaw Street, houses on there, or is that?
No, this is, there's some houses back way up here. This is a commercial development over here.
So connecting Marcy Street to Henshaw Street seems like the cheapest and most viable option. You eliminate the fire department consideration altogether. Scratching out onto your lot and doing the pave is, you still have a limited turn, turn, backing radius to back up to turn a sizable fire vehicle. We give up sidewalks, we give up curving, we give up width of pavement, and we put a gate in. That's what you're asking for, pretty much.
Yeah, and in general, I mean, and again, we, you know, ideally, this is the solution, what we presented, so that, again, we didn't, we didn't want to see it go through, the neighbors didn't want to see it go through, which I'm sure they're going to tell you all about in a bit. But, you know, the, the other challenges are to get a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead here is, it's not feasible, really, it's not a ton of land. So we thought, if this worked, great, if, you know, if this had to work, that's fine, or, you know, any one of these solutions could work. We'd prefer to, we'd prefer this, but if, if the board so felt that, that didn't achieve what the goals are here, then we have, we have alternatives, that's kind of what I wanted to share, that there are options here. We're willing to figure out the best way to make this happen in everybody's best interest. Again, there's only one house on this street, this is, this would be a second house.
And all utilities are going to be just beyond the left-hand edge of the lot A line?
Correct, yeah, to be down here, there's water, sewer, there's electric that will be run underground here from this utility pole, but the good thing is that'll be done in the right of way without, without disrupting the existing pavement.
Oh, is that going to be done again? I'm sorry.
There's a grass strip right here that will run it in the right of way, similar to the other utilities, it'll just be underground in the right of way.
Highlighted green utilities.
Yeah, one's water, right there, one sewer. I didn't highlight the electric, but the electric's going to come down underground right here.
Electric, telephone, and cable are all proposed for that.
Yeah, underground there, yep.
Was the DPW addressed the repave of the areas disturbed? You're digging up the existing Marcy Street.
Yep, and here, and here, yeah, we'll trench it.
Utilities across the street to deal with.
Yep, and if we had, if we had to from here, we'd go over from here, that's fine. We can do, we can do full width from the area that we upset. Thank you, thank you.
All right, Jim, you said? All right, are there questions, more questions from the applicant? Dave?
So it boils down to, is the neighborhood, the neighborhood doesn't want a cut through? By completing the street, it becomes a cut through? Is that what the issue is?
Um, yeah, that's what I understand.
Because you have an industrial thing on the other side of the street?
Correct.
And the concern is it's going to, because we know how traffic is like water, right?
Yes.
Just find its own level, and suddenly we have trucks going through a neighborhood that never had trucks going through a neighborhood before, correct?
Correct.
So.
We don't want that either.
We don't want that.
No.
But you showed this little backing thing, that orange, could you put it back up?
Sure I can.
That one there, the yellow one?
Yep.
That doesn't work, because you pull in the fire truck and then it has to back up.
Well, the fire truck actually, for this to work, really, I agree, and I'd have to ask the fire department whether they to ask the fire department whether they felt that worked for them, but ultimately, originally, the solution for the fire department, and I met the chief and the deputy chief out there, and they were happy with us extending it and putting a gate there, so, with the Knox box, so in the event that they had to get through there, they could.
So they could get out.
So they could get out without backing down the street, yes.
You don't want to do anything that's going to impair the emergency people.
Ten-four.
Who knows where the next houses they have to go to, right?
Yeah, well, I don't know what else we can put a house here, but this is, this might be the last buildable, flat, clean, buildable lot around here.
So it really comes down to, we need to protect, the, the citizens are asking us to consider the quality of life that they enjoy in this neighborhood, where there are no trucks, because I understand what happens when suddenly they open up a road and trucks go through and people don't think about it, but trees are low, they get hit by the tops of the trucks, blah, 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 blah. The whole thing is, changes the nature of the neighborhood.
And our intention was for not that to happen.
Okay.
But we just wanted to present options in the event that the, the board wanted to see what could possibly happen here. Ultimately, we want to do this.
All right. I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Are there more questions from the board? All right, this is a public hearing. So at this time, I would ask anyone in the audience who wished to come up and speak, to come up, state your name and address for the record, and then sign in to our handy-dandy sheet, so that we know who spoke to us. Sir, welcome.
Hi, my name is John Barrows. I'm at twenty-eight Albany Street, and thank you for having us here. I would like to talk, I will sign on my way out here. I did have a written statement, if you don't mind reading this, just so I have all my thoughts together, and then I had a question at the end, if you don't mind as well.
Certainly.
Perfect. So, I know I speak for the entire neighborhood when I say that we are greatly concerned over the lack of regard for the safety, well-being, and quality of the life of our families due to the removal of the last buffer, the last buffer, and separation we have from living in an industrial park. We've aired these concerns before to the zoning board, and we've tried to have conversations with the applicant, so that we could come to an amicable, amicable solution, but it seems they're not interested in that. It's my understanding that the powers of the planning board are exercised for the purpose of promoting the safety, convenience, and welfare of the residents of Woburn by identifying and avoiding the negative impacts of growth and development. And if this is true, I really hope you'll hear our concerns tonight. Here's some specific concerns as it relates to the application, and these are little minor things, but the applicant's plans seem to have major deficiencies, so I'm curious why these have not been rectified prior to the going to the hearing. Section two E, one E, a local plan, a locus plan at a scale of a hundred feet to the inch shows the relationship of the proposed subdivision to the neighborhood for the distance of three hundred feet on each side. This is not the map that I was provided by the city or is online. Right now, it says, I think, five hundred. Section two E, one H, drainage calculations prepared by a certified engineer. Are these, do we have these? Do we have the drainage calculations presented?
Are there?
Well, I'll tell you what, why don't you do your statement? I'm taking your notes as you write.
Sure.
So I'm going to look, I've got the file here, I'll then double-check.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we're trying to figure out, what's, what are they even building on this property? How can the board, we can make a decision on the best interest of the existing neighborhood and in alignment with the own rules and regulations, when there are no details or even a sketch of what's proposed? Now we're just seeing this now. We did not see the, the, the most updated version where it gave the options. So how much can drainage calculations be run when we have no idea how much impervious service, because we don't know the size of the home or even the location of the driveway? Now we do, apparently. The plans provided by the applicant do not properly represent how the neighborhood looks today. In the definitive subdivision right now, we have a lot of plan, it appears Marcy Street's already open. This, just to give you all a sense, and thank you for bringing that up, by the way, as far as the trucks in the neighborhood, this is our neighborhood. The, the craft plant, all that stuff was ripped down, and now we're dealing with that, and we had absolutely no say in that one, okay? This is actually what Marcy Street looks like. It's a nice little street with beautiful trees on the end of it, and if this goes through, it's actually going to take down all those trees and put that throughway in there. And for us, and I'm, I'm a little curious, a little off-script here, but I'm a little curious why the issue with the, um, uh, fire department coming down isn't an issue right now with the existing street that's on, with the existing house that's on Marcy, Marcy Street. Is it because there's now two houses on there that it's an issue? Or why wasn't it an issue when that, then, when that, that's, I'm, because that happens, like, you know, UPS comes down and they do their turn, the, the garbage trucks come down, they've been doing it ever since that house was built. I don't know why that's an issue now that there's a second house there, so that's just a point of interest. It's not a throughway, and there's a significant number of trees protecting the park in the area, but provide a buffer between our homes and the industrial park, keeping our community and our children safe from traffic, strangers that work in, in, and frequent the industrial park and noise pollution. I so, I see no indication on how this will be remedied. How can this be allowed to the board when your purpose is to promote self, safety and convenience? Water and drainage, the applicant has provided no information as how they will mitigate the removal of the estimated twelve-hundred square feet of trees and vegetation area, and the paper street will not only be impacted, uh, shading, habitat, and privacy, but will clearly have a significant impact on the stormwater runoff. What's the plan to remedy this? How can this applicant even be brought forth, even without abiding by two E, H? The applicant appears to be requesting several waivers for the subdivision rules and regulations. I do not see any justification provided for why these waivers are necessary, nor am I clear on what their waivers are for. For example, the applicant is requiring a waiver for allowing the right-of-way width of forty feet. What is actually required under the rules and regulations and, and in what section? Also, it was quite unclear to me the type of street Marcy Street qualifies as, type one, type two, type three. Where is that information provided? If it is not listed anywhere, how is anyone supposed to know what rules and regulations apply and therefore, when a waiver should be requested? How often is the board issuing waivers? Just one more page. Also, given our concerns around the safety, we do not support the applicant being allowed to waiver on the streetlights. We currently have almost no streetlights in the neighborhood, and with the applicant requesting to open up the neighborhood to an unsafe, noisy industrial park, at least they could do is provide some streetlights as required. The city's design standard in section three H specifically recommends that lots with double frontage be avoided. This lot literally has triple frontage. What's the precedent for this? This seems quite counter to the intent of the design standards. On the public hearing notice, it is indicated that in the hearing tonight was for approval of a subdivision plan for property on Marcy Street, Henshaw, and Marcy Street, Erie, and Henshaw Street, and Street A. Now, Street A is, is next to us, so my house is, just to give you a sense here, this is my house right here, twenty-eight Albany Street, and Street A is a paper street right there, which has actually been, for those of you who don't know, the, the water main that goes, that, actually, we've, all summer, we've had a water main go through this, MWRA has, has gone through all the way down Albany Street and then Mar, and then that A Street. So the original, uh, hearing actually included A Street, and when we called, they said it was a mistake. I, I don't, like, if that was the case, then the public hearing probably should have been adjusted to not include A Street. Not even directly connected to the property, so why is it even included here? Does the applicant have plans for A Street? I'm very curious, obviously, about the plans for A Street, because that is, I mean, that's a whole section that, uh, I'm more curious why they're doing this for that. Um, I'd liken the record that this is not, so, I'd like it in the record that this is not about A Street, and should the applicant seek to take any action, they cannot refer back to this hearing. Fully aware and respect the applicant has his rights, but, but so do we. As the continual push by the applicant to seek variances and waivers from the very laws and regulations to protect our rights not to be negatively impacted by this development, and his willingness to even sit down with us and have a discussion makes me question the applicant's motives and willingness to actually uphold any of the covenants that could be provided by the board. I respectfully request the board deny this application, or at a minimum, require the applicant to follow the provisions and the subdivision rules and regulations it is charged to uphold. And, and I, and I am curious on the, you know, the one question I really am, is that, that why it's such a big deal to get the, go through, or for the, you know, for the, for the police or for the fire department, when it's currently that way, and there's already somebody there, so...
Okay. Well, that is a lot of questions.
Yes.
And we will do our best to answer those questions.
Thank you.
So the first question, though, is, is there any deficiency in the public hearing notice?
No. As we said, it was an error. There was a reference to lot, to, I'm sorry, to A Street on the butters notice that was created for the public hearing.
Okay.
But as you can see from the plan that's on file, there's nothing about A Street, that's a long distance away. It truly was an error, there's nothing hidden or that I'm, that we're certainly as a city aware of, in terms of plans for A Street, so it was truly an error.
Okay. So can we just make sure that if they do come back, that they can't reference this? It's, it would be a whole new thing? Right? Like, if they come back and they say, like, what you were saying earlier, right?
If they wanted to add something on A Street next week?
Yeah.
They would need to revise the plan.
Okay.
We'd need to revise the public hearing notice.
Okay.
We'd need to put it up and have it available, so there would have to be a redo if there was anything added to this plan.
Okay. Thank you.
That we can say for sure.
Okay.
And the minutes of tonight will reflect the fact that I just made those statements, so those will actually be in writing.
Thank you.
I did have a couple of answers to at least some of the questions.
Excellent.
You asked along the way.
All right.
Thank you. There were drainage calculations that were submitted. I'm not even going to try to explain to you, but they are on record. And the one thing that I could certainly make available to anybody who might be interested, but certainly if you send me your email address, I'd be happy to send you, it's called a development impact statement. Covers a bunch of things, and the drainage calc's are in there.
Okay.
I can also let you know, I think typically our engineering and DPW departments would have reviewed that documentation and made a comment somewhere in their comment letter.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't want to try to characterize their letters on the fly tonight, but those are some that I could also make available to you, but there should be comments in both of those about the drainage calc's.
Okay.
Okay. Um, as to why there is no cul-de-sac already, that's an excellent question I asked myself. This roadway, Marcy Street, was improved in the early two thousands, and at the time that it was reviewed by that board and approved, there was a requirement for a turnaround at the end of a dead-end street. So I can't tell you, I never went back and looked at the minutes to see if there was some explanation as to why, and I don't know if any of the board members here tonight were even on the board back then, and if so, I doubt they'd remember, but perhaps they would. But I didn't know why they didn't include it the first time through. This board does typically always, has always required some sort of a turnaround, sometimes less than a full cul-de-sac. You saw an example tonight. That one actually came from another subdivision that the planning board at one point had approved. Um, so I can't tell you why it isn't there. Some of their waiver requests are practical waiver requests. You asked a good question, they're asking for a waiver to have a right-of-way width of forty feet. The actual requirement typically is fifty feet of right-of-way. They're asking for the waiver because there's no way to provide fifty here, and the forty that's there is fairly consistent with Albany and a lot of the other streets. A lot of them are laid out at forty. So to demand compliance with fifty feet would be an impossibility for them. They could give it to us on their land and make their land a lot less. In fact, it would probably make it too small to develop. But why would we do it? If you did it there, you would have to do it for the other lots that they don't own, right?
Just to be clear, it is fifty feet, though, that's the...
That's the typical requirement, is fifty.
Right. Okay.
Fifty. Similarly, on the pavement width, the pavement width is typically twenty-six feet.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, you asking for, Mr. Vina, you asking for a waiver to twenty-four?
No.
No, you're being consistent with the twenty-six. So that's not a necessarily a waiver, is not a waiver request. But the right-of-way width from fifty to forty is one of the ones they've asked for.
So is it my understanding that just because it's been done before at forty and, and that's kind of the way it is, that we, we, we're going to ignore the fifty rule? Is that my understanding?
Well, no, it's a sense of, the requirement is fifty, and it's in the rules and regs, because you're not typically dealing with this type of a situation. Very often, when you're doing a new subdivision, it's a five or a ten-acre tract, and somebody's building and laying out for the first time a new roadway system.
Right.
And when they do that, we always ask for the fifty feet, so that you can have, and the reason for that is so that you can have twenty-six feet of roadway pavement, two sidewalks on both sides, of granite curbing and some other, and grass strips on the back. Here, there are no grass strips or sidewalks in the neighborhood, that's why they're asking for those waivers. And when you don't need to make room for sidewalks and curbing and grass strips, you don't need fifty feet of right-of-way, you can do the pavement within fif, within forty.
Okay.
So that's why they're asking, I think, for that.
So again, the, as far as the, just because there's no, is the requirement for sidewalks and that type of thing, and that's just being waived, because again, it's, it's just, that's the way the neighborhood has been, or is, is that a requirement as well?
Well, the requirement is typically for subdivision to have a sidewalk on both sides of, of the street.
Okay.
And so the board could require here, if they didn't grant the waiver, and they required it, they would put in about seventy-five feet of sidewalk on both sides of the road that would lead to and from nowhere.
Right.
Right. But that, but the board, I think, could theoretically do that.
I mean, I guess the, it, it just seems like a lot of stuff has been waived in our neighborhood to allow certain things, and it seems like none of the law is actually being followed in our neighborhood, and, you know, it is an environmental justice neighborhood, which nobody apparently cares about, and this is, it honestly just feels like we're under siege completely at this point. And it is so, it, it's getting quite depressing, quite frankly, uh, for all of us at this point. There's, there's trucks that come through our neighborhood all the time, there's, it's used as a cut-through, Albany Street is used as a cut-through all the time. Cummings property, they, they make so much noise back there that we call all the time and they do nothing for it. And so I appreciate the fact that this neighborhood hasn't really followed a lot of the rules up until now, but it's just one of those things where, is, are we, are we going to?
You're in a tough spot.
Yeah.
You're a residential neighborhood hemmed in by commercial and industrial.
Yeah.
It's not easy. I wondered, you know, not to get too far away from the board meeting, but one suggestion might be, if you haven't done it yet, is to contact the at-large counselors, and particularly the ward counselor, who could maybe really take it under, you know, advisement in the wing and may be able to do something. I don't know if you've tried that.
Every time we try to talk to somebody, nobody cares, so that's why we're here. It's, we try to talk to Cummings, we try to talk to people, and nobody, nobody, everybody nods their head and says, yeah, yeah, we understand, and then nobody ever does anything. And it's just getting really disheartening right now, as far as our neighborhood is concerned. We feel like we're just getting beat down at this point, quite frankly, so, I apologize, but keep...
It's okay, that would be my positive, that would be as positive a suggestion proactive as I could make, is the couches, might even be the people that you haven't talked to yet that might be able to break some of the impacts of some of these things.
Thank you. And you said the ward would be, okay.
Yeah. Let me find the line. Make sure I give you the right name.
Thank you.
That's it? Is it Darlene? We're pretty sure it's Darlene Marsha Bruin.
Darlene, who redistricted our entire area, you know that happened, right?
She doesn't redistrict, just so you know. That's a requirement of state law, and that's done by the city clerk's office.
Yeah, well, we found out that because we made a noise because of Cummings, because of, I'm sorry, because of this development, somebody took a pen and literally just redistricted, not even our entire neighborhood, they redistricted just our section. We now, I used to be able to walk to the Goodyear to vote, now I got to go all the way to Shamrock or whatever it is, because somebody didn't like us making noise, and we weren't even making that much noise, we just wanted somebody to listen to us, but But legitimately, and we know this because of the mayor race and the, and somebody who ran for mayor, they looked at it and somebody just took a pencil and redistricted our entire thing. And we didn't even know about it. Marcy was our rep and apparently we annoyed her and therefore we're not in that district anymore. And that, I mean, that's, to me, that's about as blatantly as ridiculous as it gets. And so I apologize, but that, that to me is, like, come on. We can't even get somebody to stay in a district, right? They took out a pen out and said, "Sorry, we don't like you anymore, so you got to go someplace else because I don't want to deal with you." I mean, that's pretty much the way it looks, quite frankly. I might be wrong.
Well, it's quite an allegation
Yeah, I know.
to make in public.
I know. And I'd like to have an answer for why we redistrict out of no for.
And I would urge you to call the city clerk's office. That was the agency under state law that has to take or is involved in the, in the, any sort of redistricting.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we knew nothing about it and it just all of a sudden happened. And one day I had to go to Shamrock instead of Goodyear, so.
Sure.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's the extent of my answers for now.
Okay, but we have a list of questions.
Yes, we do.
Okay, wonderful. So the plan is, right now, the plan that has apparently a bunch of different alternatives. And one of the items that is for the board tonight to hear your concerns and the neighbors' concerns, to question the applicant and to try to get some sense here as to what to do.
I appreciate it. I would say the biggest thing that we, it's the throwaway. That's the biggest thing and thank you for bringing that up as far as what happens where water goes. Because if that opens up, there's no question that the parking on that street and the trucks that are going to come back and forth on that are going to make it. And we got young children and with no sidewalks, it makes it even more complicated, so.
Certainly. So I, we do appreciate the visual aids. Usually what we would do is if the members wanted to take what you brought with you into the public record, then you would leave it. But since, I don't know, do you have it in like PDF form that you could email us?
Oh yeah, we can email this. So all, what I read.
What makes sense.
I would match a copy of it.
Yeah, that would be great if you could email. And what about the photographs and your visuals? If you have those electronically, then what, what we will do is make sure that we forward it on, we'll make it part of the record and the file, but we'll, more importantly perhaps for the moment, make sure that we send copies to all the planning board members. So they can look at it in, you know, more leisurely thoughtful ways.
So if it makes sense to do so, we can make a motion to accept into the public record PDF copies of all the visual aids that were given to us in paper form. And then if you emailed it to us, then that would be, I mean, we're talking about how many items? Just so that, you know.
Three PDF photos and three pages of notes.
Okay, all right. So the motion would be to accept into the public record the three PDFs of the visual aids that this gentleman brought to us as well as three pages of notes. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carolyn, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is five in favor, none opposed, so that is accepted into the public record. So if you could do us that favor, that would probably help all of us get the information where it needs to go.
What email do I need to send that to?
You can send it to my email address, TCassidy@cityofwoburn.com.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
As does the board.
I'll take this back so somebody else can go, I'll bring this back up.
All right, if there is anyone else who would like to speak, if you could come up and state your name and address for the record and then eventually sign in after he is done. Welcome.
My name is Srinidip Kaur and I live at 2 Marcy Street, Woburn. It's right in front of this lot. And as I told in past hearing as well, we have the same concern that it's for the safety of our kids. One of the reasons we bought this property was that this is a dead-end street. It took us like a couple of years to find the house on a dead-end street. As we assume and we've been advised that the tree is no-cut zone by the city, but now all this tree on that part and the, on Lot 2 will be, will not be there just because of this plan. And which, and the removal of required vegetation buffer between us and the industrial businesses which provide shade, reduce noises and has been extremely beneficial to soak up running of water these storms we are having. And again, the opening of this area, street would be again, more traffic, dangerous condition for our children from cars using the street as a pass-through or cut-through street. As we have pictures on Erie Street, it's already been like it's a parking lot for the industrial area. Then this could be another street for parking and it would be hard for us to even go through to anywhere if we had to take our cars through our driveway. And it doesn't appear that the applicant has followed the submission requirement for a definitive plan per Section 11E1. No drainage calculation were provided. So it might, I have no like proper knowledge, but I'm just addressing what concerns we have. So it might would affect our drainage problem or a water pressure problem. So if they can clarify those things as well, that will be helpful for us to know. And as I told, we have, I have a one-year-old children. So my concern is pretty much about my safety of my kid. As you know, that these streets are really small streets and people are using that as a racetrack. It could be like a four-way racetrack. Everyone is going through those street, which will be dangerous for our kid. So this is pretty much I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for coming today. With respect to the plans that have the drainage calculations, if anybody wanted to email you and get them, how can we, how can we get this information to the folks that are very interested in it?
Probably the best way to do that, we could post them online in the planning department. We have a projects page and we can certainly post them there. You're also welcome to individually email me at TCassidy@cityofwoburn.com. And you ask me for them and I'd be happy to send them to you by email.
I think they're already posted online.
Are they? They may be. It's called a development impact statement. I think it's already up there as Karen said. We typically do post it. And when you see drainage, development impact statement, you might, you don't see the words drainage calculations. But you go in two or three pages and then you start to see the calculations.
Right, so that way everyone would have all the information you need to start matching stuff up without, you know, being told, oh no, they did provide them? If that makes sense? Okay. Bob?
Tina, is the drainage calculation, because they're talking about connecting to the current water line that's there. There's also no about putting any more of a catch. So they're going to use the catch basins that are there already? Okay.
Yes. That's my understanding is that they're not adding any new ones.
So have they done drainage calculations?
Yeah, they're, in the development impact statement, there are three. In fact, Mr. Slager, did you prepare them?
I did, yes.
You did? So, and they're included in, there's three or four pages in the back of the development impact statement. And that is on record.
And what that is basically saying is that the water line that they currently have and the catch basins that they currently have can handle any more drainage that there's going to be from this development?
That the catch basins can. The water line is just for the water service. But the drainage system, yes, that's what they're saying. And that's why it's important to, to go back and see what our engineering and public works departments, they have the experts on, on staff who are engineers who can evaluate the sufficiency of those.
All right, this continues to be a public hearing. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come up? Hello and welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name is Marlene Soler. I live at 25 Erie Street and I bought the property that they are saying is zero Marcy Street. If you don't mind, I'm going to read a statement. So my family had moved to Erie Street from Cambridge and this property has been abandoned since. Cummings has never taken care of this property, the neighbors actually have. We go and clean and cut the trees because it's affecting our own property. I have actually spoken to the Woburn Fire Department in regards to the gate that Mr. Avini had explained. With this gate that is going to be installed on Marcy Street onto Henshaw, spoken several times to them, Mr. Avini had stated that the Woburn Fire Department will be the ones maintaining the gate and that is false. The actual owner who prop, who will own this property will be the one that needs to maintain the gate. That concerns us greatly if the gate is never locked, if it's never maintained, or if there's a destruction, it doesn't work. How is the fire department going to go down the street? With the variance meetings that we have had with the council, even a city council member himself drove down Marcy Street and had to pull in to my neighbor's driveway because the street you cannot turn around in. It is not wide enough. That affects their family and also the parking in the area. If this gate is not put in and it is opened, it will become a racetrack. On Erie Street alone, I have numbers of pictures of people parking in front of my house who actually work or are joining the businesses on Henshaw Street. I've actually called the police department and ticketed a number of them because they've blocked my own driveway. The concerns that the neighbors have is how it's going to be maintained, Marcy Street onto Henshaw. Also, with the potential of adding that gate, it's never been cleared on who's actually going to maintain it. The Woburn Fire Department stated that they will not. The combining of the properties into one large lot includes the trees aligning my property, which I have been known to, and I was told that is a buffer zone between my property and the businesses on Henshaw Street. With this new owner potentially owning this property, there is never a guarantee that those trees are going to be a buffer zone between the residents and now the businesses. Also, I have a question for Mr. Avini's. How can we guarantee that the new owner will maintain those trees? There is no guarantee. From our variance meeting, he stated that he would have that written in to the contract. There's no guarantee that someone would maintain those pine trees. With this property also happening, they are going to lose an estimation of 1,200 square feet of trees and brush. That affects our neighborhood greatly. Between the MWRA, other issues in the neighborhood, and trees dying, we have lost over dozens in that area alone. This affects my family and all of my neighbor's family. I had to install a fence, my property facing Henshaw Street, just because of the visitors and the people who work there have dumped trash, walked on my property and actually have come and talked to my children. So I have installed a fence there. With this is affecting all of us if we have more access, I'm sorry, if they have more access into parking onto Marcy Street. The petitioner also has never actually addressed the size of the home that will be built there. There was never actually any plans addressed to the neighborhood and published. The neighbors actually would be considered splitting and purchasing the land from them. Cummings property has never addressed that if they would actually consider that. So we, as the neighbors, would like to just verse that we have tried our hardest to work with Cummings. We're a hard-working, diverse neighborhood and we have children. The amount of destruction happening in this area now has affected all of us greatly. We cannot allow for this project to affect the wildlife in the area, the loss of trees, the streets that are covered in holes and the care that Cummings does not have in our own neighborhood. So I am asking for the board to rescind his offer with this petition.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for speaking. All right, is there anybody else who would like to come up and speak with us? Hello and welcome.
Maureen Lamper and I live at 3 Erie Street. I've been there for almost 60 years. When I first moved there, we were a very quiet dead-end street with nothing. One day you woke up to all kinds of tractors putting in the commercial area. Okay, it happened, it's done. We were told, and Bernie Golden was the alderman at the time, that that strip of land was a buffer zone between Cummings properties and our properties. Now they're proposing to take some of that strip of land to add to this lot, to remove the trees that are on it. Once the trees are removed, you are going to be looking at this facade of a building that plus the noise, the dirt, the dust, everything else that these pine trees are filtering through. They go in and take all of this down and they're going to be taking all the parking spaces that come across on that strip of land on the side on Henshaw Street. Where are those cars going to be parking but in front of all of our property, all the way up Erie Street? The street, we have wonderful homes, wonderful people take care of their property. We have wonderful neighbors. We have to have some consideration for these neighbors, myself included. It is an, almost a nightmare. You've got 40, 52-foot trailer trucks coming down, one coming down, one coming up, and you have a 28, if it's even 28 feet, street wide. You've got all kinds of people coming in and out all days, all hours of the day and night. You've got trailers that leave their tabs in the back and park overnight and somebody will come by in the morning and take it out. You have linen trucks. You have some kind of a rental truck going down there. I think they're renting out spaces in the back for whoever needs to have a rent to parking spaces. Something has to be done to consider the neighbors. It's, it's to the point where it is unbelievable. And, you know, you either shut up or get out and you can't do that. So something has to be done to kind of get back the neighborhood that we had and have respect for the neighborhood because there is none. The opposite end of Erie Street has granite curbstones, has paved streets. You come across Washington Street and you're in the poor cousin zones. You have a street that's filled with potholes. The trucks go up and down and the whole house vibrates. I have a crack in my foundation. My house is almost 75 years old. You wouldn't have a crack in it now, it's there now. You have all the trucks that are doing this MWRA project. They are parked all along Albany Street. What other street in the city of Woburn would you find all of this heavy equipment blocking the whole half of the road and just left there? Puddles of water coming all over the street. It's, it's just unacceptable. And nobody, nobody wants to listen to us. I thought our new alderman now was Papalato. Now you're saying it's, it's, it's Marsha Bruin.
Well, and a colleague, a colleague here corrected me, I didn't say anything. But he thinks it's Papalato.
You can't get anybody to do anything to help you. And that's not fair. We pay the same taxes as anybody else in the city of Woburn pay. We are entitled to the same services and we are not getting that kind of care or respect for it. And it's not right. It is not right. So I appreciate listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could write your name and address down, that way we'll know who came and spoke to us today. Thank you. All right, this is still a public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to, oh, sir? You are welcome. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you. Matthew Andella, I live at 19 Erie Street. I'm not going to go through and tear everything apart again. We've cut this covered pretty well as far as gripes and concerns go. I mean, I, as in 19 Erie Street, I would be on the top left just outside the image that you have up on the board there. And obviously my concern is going to be the removal of those 20, 20-plus parking spaces where they're creeping up onto 2 and 3 Erie Street already. That they're going to be one house away from me and they'll be in front of my house all day. I get them the other way from the park as it is now. And obviously Marcy Street being a dead-end, is where my daughter has played. Mr. Barrows, they ride their bikes up and down there and they've had a nice safe spot there for a decent amount of time and definitely would like to not see that opened up. And that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. If you could write your name and address down for us, we'd appreciate it. Awesome, thank you. All right, is there anybody else who would like to come up and speak to us? Sir, come right on up. And welcome.
Paul McDonald, 35 Albany Street. I think this project is detrimental to our whole neighborhood, losing the canopy of trees along Henshaw Street and the undergrowth. Right now we have somewhat of a buffer. If that's gone, we have nothing to look at but buildings, parking lots, cars, headlights, dumpsters, trucks. It's not right. That's all I have to say.
Sir, thank you for coming up and speaking. Thank you. Hello and welcome.
Thank you. Nothing that wasn't said yet, but I would like to emphasize, I live on the oldest house on Erie Street, 47. I would not change that old house for any other place, the fenced places in Woburn because of them. I have found in that neighborhood, the type of neighborhood being an immigrant that you watch on the movies. I lived in many different places in this country, but I was on Erie Street that I found the real people. This is the people, they are real. We haven't been heard, nobody care about us. We call this one, no, it's not this one. Call that one, it's not that one. Call that one, no, it's not me. Nobody wants to hear. And this is not fair. I have nothing else to add. I have nothing else to add to the streets that are not well taken care of. We care for our properties. We have beautiful gardens, we have beautiful people. We're still bringing food to each other. We're still respecting each other's private, but we'll be there for one another as we are here tonight. Tired, long days, all kind of situations, as you can imagine. But we are here because we care about that neighborhood. We care that nobody else cares about us. They want to bring more people to this un-forsaken place? Do you want to bring another family here that doesn't know that that place is a place that no one is willing to listen to us? That doesn't seem fair. We got our houses. I have been there for almost a decade. And again, I would not change. I love my little old house that shakes with those trucks coming in and out. They fix a hole next to the other one, so they fix one and leave the other one open. I don't understand that kind of situation, but that's okay, because I have them. And for them, and for my little house, and for this beautiful city that I love time and time, more and more, again, I would not leave. But I would beg you to listen to us. It's impossible that you would not see that these people are here to tell you something is not right about the place in Woburn. A Woburn that people lived for sixty years, people were born in here and never left. People who join in, I can tell you, it's a beautiful place. I found a place that I love, that my family is happy. But something is wrong. And I would really, really appreciate if you're taking consideration all the things that you have heard tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And ma'am, could you tell us your name, please? After hearing-
Sorry. Valkyria Govea, forty-seven Erie Street.
Thank you so much for coming and telling us.
A couple of the speakers tonight have had previously sent me emails, and I believe I provided copies to the members. But if I get any more, I will obviously continue that practice.
Excellent, thank you.
She was one of them.
All right, all right. Is there anybody else here that would like to come up and speak with us? Anybody? Okay. So at this point, this is a public hearing. Does any member have any questions or comments before I, oh, go ahead, Jim.
One for the applicant, please. What is the basis for not looping the water on this development? And why aren't the gradations for the roadway system and the utilities shown, which is listed in our notes from the DPW that you would typically see? Currently, the water's going to stop just beyond a new gate you're putting in in all developments in this city if the water looped.
I'm sorry, so you're asking a question about the water line?
Water lines being looped. You probably want to refer to your engineer for direction.
That is a requirement in the subdivision rules and regs, that all water lines be looped.
Okay.
Connected to another main on both ends.
We're asking for a waiver that the water line stops here?
Yes.
We just want, we thought it was more practical to connect it right there. Not sure why it wasn't looped twenty, twenty short years ago when this was built. But we thought we'd come and ask that question. We'd ask for that waiver.
Need to defer for direction from your, is it financial implications, or it's a requirement of the subdivision? When you went to develop this tract of land, you open up the regulations for the city, and you have to meet the requirements. You obviously know you're looking for a waiver for it. My question to you as the applicant is, what is the reason why you are looking for relief from the city of Woburn?
It's a fair question. I don't know where the water line is. I don't know if there's a water line that runs down Henshaw Street. It might not be out until Erie Street. I'd have to look and see where that water line exists. I'm not sure there's anything here to loop it to.
And the other question was the gradation of the roadway? National gradation that's shown there is be sloping towards Henshaw Street. And there's no inverts or elevation shown on your drawing for the pavement.
Okay. We can certainly provide grading on the road. Our intention is to pitch it, so this is up, this right now is a little higher in here than Marcy Street, I don't know if you've been down there, but it's a little, this area, unpaved area is a little higher. So our intention is to pitch it back down towards here and crest it.
And final question is, have you tried to do your turning ready eye for the fire engine turnaround? Not a conversation with the fire department. Doing an engineering drawing with the equipment that's utilized in the city to turn around those vehicles.
Yeah, it's like an eighty-five-foot radius, and it wouldn't fit without eating up most of the lot. I'd be happy to show that to you if you would like us to present that.
Definitely like to see the turning ready eye shown, including the proposed strip that you put on the lot A. How you pull into that lot and back out to the proposed roadway width and stay on it.
With a regular vehicle?
No, with a fire truck.
Fire truck's not going to go through there. The fire, I don't expect that the fire truck's going to be able to turn around here. That's why we're proposing the gate.
That's the whole idea of this. Not all cases does the fire truck have to go through there to enter Henshaw Street.
Correct.
Fire vehicles, emergency vehicles, have to have a means to turn around. The convenience of putting a gate up there is only for them to access Henshaw Street in case they have to fight a fire with the commercial buildings down there or any other residents from a two-pot access. We've had this happen in the city, but we didn't have access. And that's what brought these rules of regulations to a head. All right? Francis Street Nursing Home. Okay? One access.
One way in.
We tried to do this, didn't fly too well. So I'd like to see the documentation.
Okay.
Put in an engineering drawings, please. Thank you.
Tina?
If I could just, I'll add a little bit. I think you're going to find that the fire department is going to say, we're not going to do a three-point turn. I think they typically drive in, and they'd love to drive out, which would a gate would permit them to do. But if worse comes to worse, and they're in an emergency, they'll drive in, and they will back out with people, you know, flagging them and watching on those rare occasions. But I envision that being used a lot more by a UPS truck, or Amazon, or a stray, you know, motorist who thinks they can get through Marcy Street and finds out they can't. This would give an alternative for any vehicle other than a long fire truck, an ability to do a turn and get out of there without having to back all the way down Marcy onto Albany, which wouldn't be safe. Or using one of the private driveways on Marcy, which can also be unsafe. Obviously, you have anything that could be in a private driveway, children, pets, people who are unaware, doing whatever. And so providing an alternative to the use of a private driveway seemed to make some sense. But I think it'll be used by vehicles other than the long fire vehicles. That's just based on prior conversations with fire.
All right, are there other questions from the board? So I have, oh, Carolyn, go ahead.
Yes, a question for Tina through the chair. I'm wondering whether this is an appropriate matter for us to consider a site visit.
Could very well be. Yes, I think it'd be a great idea.
Yeah, Carolyn, I think that's a great idea. How do you guys feel about it?
Do you want to do it separately or a joint-hosted site visit?
In my experience, a joint-hosted site visit has been preferable, so that people can see us there and, you know, know what we're doing, as opposed to sort of silently creeping by in our cars.
Okay, so given the time of year we're in, I'm guessing that it's not an evening or late afternoon site visit, but rather a weekend site visit, Saturday or Sunday.
Yeah, essentially, when we've done site visits closer to Christmas, it's sort of like a Saturday, usually a Saturday morning. We have to figure out whether that's possible under the circumstances, but.
Available any day.
The recently retired are available any day. I see. Must be nice. All right. So Carolyn, I think that's a great idea. I think in terms of scheduling it, that will be the only challenge at this time of year. But, okay.
Not to jump ahead, but when it gets there, and you asked me what my recommendation was going to be, it was going to be to continue this public hearing to December twelfth. So that would be five weeks from today. I can tell you that I'm not available this Saturday, but I'm available all other Saturdays, including the one after Thanksgiving. So just depending on when we might be able to get a quorum of the board, whether we do that tonight, or whether we've got a couple of members, another one who we hope to participate. We can do it by email. But I guess, I guess I'm backtracking a little bit, thinking out loud. If you're going to conduct a site visit, I think that's the day to which, and time to which you continue the hearing.
Right, that would make some sense. So we're probably going to have to do what we can to get at least the folks here to commit to a particular time and place so that we can continue it, if that's the will of the board. All right, well, how about, let's table that for the time being.
Okay.
Carolyn, was that your only question?
Yes.
All right. So I have a question regarding buffer zones. So my memory of the buffer zones in this area, should there be any, is not that great. Do you have some wisdom for me? Or is that something that we can talk about at our next meeting?
I'll share a little bit with what I think I know, and then we can certainly add to it at the next meeting with facts.
Sure.
And corrections if needed. There is a provision in the zoning ordinance that talks about a buffer zone, and it's called a buffer zone, and it's an area of setback between industrial and residential. And the board might remember, we heard a little bit about this up on Dragon Court, in that area where there was a direct abutting, different uses. So there's that. But that buffer is between industrial uses and residential, not residential uses in residential. So that buffer-
That's my question. Because I don't know who owns the industrial property, but it's interesting that it's Cummings that owns this property. So that's a little bit of a twist. I've not seen that in my twenty-something years on the board, where we have a situation where the developer and the industrial owner are the same. And so that's just something I'm thinking about, right? Because if we have buffer zone requirements, then the question is, well, how do they apply in this particular circumstance, which is frankly, to me, unusual? So I'd have to, you know, I'm just being transparent. You know, that's what I'm thinking about. I'd like an answer to that question, how the buffer zones in the city of Woburn work in the circumstance where there's common ownership, shall we say, intrazonal common ownership? How, if any, does that impact how we look at it? And the answer may be it doesn't, but I would really like an answer to that question. And that may be beyond the scope of me and you, Tina. It may be a city solicitor issue as to interpretation.
And inspectional services. I would consult with both of them.
Oh, inspectional services, yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you guys understand my question, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right. So that's all the questions I had at the moment. Anybody else for questions? Dave?
Just on the buffer zone thing. If that's private property, and there happens to be a lot of trees on it, can we stop them from cutting them all down?
So I'd remind you of a long time ago, Montvale Ave. Remember that? So the fact that it's private property and that there are trees that are, of course, beneficial to the whole community on it, I mean, private property rights are pretty sacred. But, so that's my answer to your question, is the reminder of that long ago time.
Right, because I remember we had a concern where somebody said, yeah, we'll protect the trees. And I think we might be talking the same thing here, and they just cut them all down.
Yep, that's what happened.
And, yeah, and pretended like, oops. And then said they stick a couple of saplings in the ground. It was sort of like, it's sort of like a conscience blinker. You know when the person puts the blinker on after they make the turn? Well, it's, it was, it's kind of the same thing where they cut down the trees and they stick a couple of things in the ground and say, oh, okay, the neighborhood's fine. We put six trees in, and a hundred years from now, maybe they'll be bigger.
But that's my answer.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I understand where they're coming from, but I just don't know, can we control it?
That is an excellent question. All right, any further follow-up questions from the commentary? Okay, I don't see any. So at this point, sir, as the petitioner, if you'd like to address anything before I ask for the planning board director's recommendation?
I'd love to, thank you.
Okay.
Regarding the buffer, Tina might know this. In the Woburn zoning, that was added around two thousand, around two thousand or two thousand and two. And the onus on that was that industrial properties that were being developed adjacent to residential districts were required to construct a buffer of the required setback plus seventy feet. The zoning district line is on this side of Henshaw Street. But at that time, when that was added, the, and I think this is what you're going to hear from the building commissioner, but I'm very excited to hear what he says. But I think the onus on that was on the industrial development. Again, this is a pre-existing condition. I will say, our intention, I've said it all along, I've said it in the zoning board, said it in here. Our intention is to keep the pine trees just as the way they are. I'll be honest with you. I would love to build none of this. I'd love to build, extend Marcy Street to this driveway and leave all of this here. Unfortunately, there's no vehicle that allows us to do that. We'd have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and get a variance for the frontage. They clearly will not give us that. They have a history. We tried to get a variance for three feet of setback, and we didn't get it. So we're certainly not getting that. But I, you know, we understand, and we don't want to take any of these trees down. We don't want to take, we will not take these. We will deed this. We'll put a deed restriction on these, that these trees will stay there. Can believe me or not, I'm telling you, that's the case. We don't, you're right. Cummings' Properties, we manage this property here. The last thing we want to do is hear that people are challenged by the fact that we took down these trees. So that's kind of simple. Can believe what you want to believe. Those trees will stay there, all of them. We will preserve every single one of them. It costs money to take them down, and they're pretty big trees.
So you're saying in some vehicle, you will put it in writing that the trees?
Yeah, we'll put a deed restriction on it, that the trees, this whole area needs to stay just as it is. But for the fact that if we have to do a cul-de-sac, and again, I'd like some clarification on that, too. Or if this does, you know, if we have to do this, we'll have to, you know, we're going to have, there's a bunch of trees on Marcy Street here that I'm going to have to go to make this work. Like I said, I would love to only build it to right here and call it a day, and save all those trees and preserve the buffer. There's no vehicle, the Zoning Board of Appeals won't allow us to do that. But I can say definitively that we will not remove these trees, and we will put a deed restriction on that property. That those trees can't be removed unless they die or fall into somebody's yard. They're beautiful old pine trees. We have no desire to take them down. We've left them there. They're ours, and we left them there. I'm going to say they're ours. This is property that's managed by Cummings Properties. We've not taken those trees down to date. We have no intention of taking them down. And we will, again, we're just creating our own enemy if we do that.
So my question on that is, this lot with a house on it, presumably you're building it not to keep, but to sell.
Correct.
Right? And would you be selling the lot with the strip of land?
Yeah, this whole thing will be sold.
So I do appreciate the suggestion of a deed restriction, but my, I'm not a real estate lawyer, but my question would be the enforceability of that. But that's one of the things that we would think about, certainly, as part of your proposal.
The flip side is, again, we'll hear from the building commissioner or the city solicitor regarding the buffer, and that will inform how we go forward.
Yes, absolutely. And so like I said, I was very transparent in my question because I've never before sat on a project where the, you know, one could say that the ownership was in common, right? Over the line from the industrial to the residential, and I just don't know which way that goes.
Yeah, that's fair. Fair question. I do have one other question from Member Callahan regarding your comment about the cul-de-sac. Is the intention, is your thoughts that the cul-de-sac would eliminate the need for the gate, and the fire department could turn their vehicles around in that? Or some kind of, or if the fire department could turn their vehicles around in this configuration, would that be, would that make sense?
I don't think either one would work currently configured.
Okay, so theoretically, you're, by process of elimination, the only way this could then work is if that Marcy Street went through to Henshaw Street.
I didn't say that.
Well, if a cul-de-sac doesn't work?
I have a concept. You have an engineer. I challenge you to challenge your engineer.
10-4. Thank you.
All right. All right, so at this point, then, if there are no further questions for the petitioner or for anyone else, I would ask the planning board director, do you have a recommendation, Tina?
I would, if the board is interested in a site visit. I would recommend that we pick, there's three Saturdays between, well, there are four Saturdays between now, between now and your next meeting on the 12th. I would recommend that we consider scheduling a site visit for 10:00 AM on either the 25th of November or the 2nd. 2nd or 9th of December.
Okay, so we have three potential Saturdays to choose from, the 25th, the 2nd, and the 9th. Are there any members who have conflicts on, you know, any of those three that we can just immediately say no to? No, everybody, everybody's here, all three? The sooner the better? All right.
And the earlier the better.
Well, very true, because it just gets colder and colder, doesn't it? So if that's true, then we have potentially Saturday, the, did you say the 18th?
No, that's not available for me.
Okay.
For the 25th.
All right, well, what about Saturday, the 25th? And we would need a time. 10:00 AM?
8:30.
8:30.
8:30? Earlier the better. You guys aren't kidding.
All the neighbors out there, they're all up at 6:00.
They probably are. All right, so let us do 8:30 AM on Saturday, November 25th. And we would meet at the Zero Marcy Street or as close to it as possible. And then all of us get to find parking, don't we? All right.
What parking?
The rules of engaging with the board while they're there?
So generally, generally what we do at a site visit is we, we look around. And in the past, the applicant and his counsel can point us to certain places and say, hey, look at this, or hey, look at this. And in the past, if the neighbors who are there wish to point to things, they can do that. But other, but we don't conduct deliberations. So, I mean, if people want us to see something and make sure we see it, that's the sort of conversation. That's totally fine. Tina?
Agreed.
Correct me if I'm wrong. So that's how it goes. Dave, do you have something to say?
No, I was just going to say, we've done this before, and we welcome the community to come out and watch us do it. So you can see we really do it.
Okay, so we have that scheduled. And so then, if it is the will of the board to continue the public hearing to that day, time, and place, we would then conclude the matter for tonight. So if there's a motion, I'd appreciate it.
So a motion to continue this public hearing? Until what day?
The 25th of November at 8:30 AM.
We're going out to, no, we're going out to see them on, oh, till that day. Okay. And what was that, November 25th?
At 7, at 8:30.
8:30 AM.
At Zero Marcy Street.
No, it isn't. I just forget what day it is.
No worries. All right, that's the motion. Is there a second? Second by Dave. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, that's five in favor and none opposed. We will see you all the day, Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I have a question. Is that a public hearing? So that site visit is an extension of the public hearing?
Correct.
It is an open public hearing.
It is. So anyone in the public?
Fantastic.
But in terms of the, I mean, in terms of, you know, arguing a position, for example, that's not what that's for. It's simply to make sure we see what everyone wants us to see.
Would that be a gate scheduled after that for?
Yes.
The follow-up?
Yep, yep.
Awesome.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody need a minute, or shall we go on to the rest of our business? All right, hearing, hearing nobody saying they need a minute, the next thing I'm going to call under subdivisions is Sherman Terrace, expiration of construction completion date and update on completion of remaining work. Sherman Terrace LLC, William Shirey.
Good evening.
Attorney Salvati, welcome.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. We're going to ask, and I think the planning board director is going to recommend that we put this over to the December meeting. We're getting closer. We fixed the tree issue and talked to the neighbors. But there's an issue with our turnaround, the size that was installed compared to the size that was allowed. And I'm trying to get an exact number and square footage and our ability to make turns on that turnaround. So I would ask for a little more time on that. We also need to find a place to put another monument marker because the, one of them was in the right-of-way or in the driveway. That is the request.
And I'm going to assume that as-built plans can't really be done until those issues are worked out.
That is correct. I think we really have to address the turnaround and whether it should be. I do have the new easement for it, the new easement area for it to be, to go on record. But we really need to address it's, whether it's visual enough for the general public to see as it turn around. And why the size, if it's any different, why it is different. So yes, the as-built cannot be, we're at the point of as-built, but that's the last thing we need to do that as-built.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Attorney Salvati? All right, hearing no questions. Tina, do you have a recommendation?
I do. I am going to recommend that with respect to the Sherman Terrace subdivision that we table discussion to the board's meeting on December 12th. And we'll hope that we have some of these issues resolved by then, maybe even an as-built submitted.
Oh, wouldn't that be lovely?
Wouldn't it?
So moved.
All right, motion by Bob. Is there a second? Second by Carolyn. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is five in favor and none opposed. We will see you on the 12th on Sherman Terrace. Next, under subdivisions, Carlson Way, expiration of construction completion date and update on completion of remaining work tasks. And this is Brian Malanson. Attorney Salvati, welcome again.
Very similar request. This one's closer than Sherman. I think our only issue at this point is some discrepancies on the as-built in relation to what the engineering department found, which was just today. So obviously, we didn't have time to rectify that. So I think we need to make some few changes on the as-built, and we need to get you a acceptance plan.
No.
No.
As it turned out, the good news is, I checked with engineering today, and acceptance plan was submitted quite a while ago and was found to be acceptable. So you've covered the acceptance plan base.
So Jim Keenan's going to yell at me for calling him and.
For being thorough and making sure the board had what it needed. The board will eventually need to take a formal vote on that acceptance plan to put the, you know, street acceptance motion in gear. But it has already been submitted, and engineering confirmed it was acceptable.
So I can certainly say that the revisions that are needed for the as-built plan will be done by your next meeting.
Hopefully, a week or two in advance.
Hopefully, a week or two. Hopefully, three weeks in advance.
Would be great.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have questions for Attorney Salvati? Hearing none, Tina, do you have a recommendation?
I do. I'd like to table discussion on the Carlson Way subdivision completion matter to the board's December 12th meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hands. That would be five in favor, none opposed. All right, Attorney Salvati, we will see you on that as well on December 12th. Crossman Road, expiration of completion date.
Yes, right now, the completion date just expired at the end of October.
All right, Attorney Salvati.
Getting my TV time, I guess.
Excuse me, can we notice a trend here?
Is it me?
Or is it just?
Don't say it's me. It's my clients, I guess, my choice of clients. So this one's a little different. It's pretty well off in our mind. The good thing for this board, I think, is that we have a unique situation in that Crossman Road was improved in the middle of it. It's not a cul-de-sac, it's not a new street. So what is out there now is better than what was there. It's not like it's an open road. It's got a coating on it. It's wider than it used to be. He's doing, he bought the two lots on the right-hand side as you go up Crossman, and those two not developed yet. And so he doesn't want to put the curbing on the sidewalk in on that side on the final coat until they're, at least their foundations are in. So the request, I believe, is for a year.
It is, till October 30 of 2024, an extension of the completion date.
And I provided a timeline that shows they've started the house, the third house on the left, and they're going to start one house this fall on the right. And the second house on the right will be the spring. So that is the request to extend to October 30th of '24.
And engineering department has reviewed that request for, in two things I asked today. One is they still feel comfortable that the amount of bond that's available is sufficient to cover the remaining work. And they did think that the timeline that was presented was thorough and reasonable. So staff would be supportive of an extension of the completion date for Crossman Road to October 30, 2024.
And remind me, this was held up because they, your developer needed to build some houses out before finishing the road? What, remind me what the holdup was.
The holdup was that he entered into an agreement to buy additional land on the other side of the street.
And then wanted to?
So that turned it, what, those two are on an A and R plan. They're not part of the subdivision. But they are on the road that's part of the subdivision. And so the three on the left were the subdivision that you approved. The two on the right are newly purchased. And so now he's asking for extra time so that he could build those and then put the sidewalk in.
That was my memory. That was, that was, that was just the reason why it, everything got held up because of this extra.
Yes, and it's all registered land, too, so the.
Oh, well, yeah.
Yeah, the plan, the plan took a little while.
Indeed. All right. Any other questions for the planning board director or the applicant? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved. So give the extension till October of next year.
All right.
He's gifting me.
Second.
All right, motion by Dave to accept the planning board director's recommendation. Second by Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Five in favor, none opposed. The enlargement carries.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you, Attorney Salvati. Next, we have planning board director update.
Yes, just to recap, well, a couple of things. So we have two meetings right now on the books for November 28th and December 12th. But all of your business tonight's been continued to the December 12th date. So I would recommend that you consider having staff just cancel the November 28th tentative meeting date. If you do that, then the meeting on December 12th would have the following agenda items. The two public hearings here tonight for 43 Pool and the Marcy Street definitive subdivision. We can have a brief discussion, we hope, about potential mural legislation. We've been working on that, and Casey will be back, and we can update you and perhaps have that discussion. And then we have a couple of expired construction completion dates. Carlson Way and Sherman Terrace, we heard this evening, and also 24 Flag Street. We've already contacted the developer and expect to have his paperwork back. So that'll be your agenda for the December 12th meeting, and that'd be the last date we'd ask you to consider. And we'll have, hopefully, a full board at that time to pick the calendar of meeting dates for next year.
All right. I did take a brief look at those. Those looked fine. So I don't know if anybody had any thoughts on the meeting dates, but we can finalize that on December 12th.
Excellent.
All right. Okay, and so what we then have, if everyone is in agreement, is a cancellation of our meeting on the 28th. That we have this site visit on the 25th, then we have December 12th. Everybody's in agreement? Okay. Tina, that, that sounds wonderful.
Good.
All right. Approval of minutes, October 24th, 2023. If folks had had a chance, except for Dave, to look at the meeting minutes for that meeting, if there are questions or concerns, please bring them forth. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the October 24th planning board meeting minutes.
Motion by Bob. Is there a second? Second by Carolyn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a vote. Please, all those in favor, please raise your hand. That's four in favor, one abstention. Dave abstaining. All right, other business matters that may legally come before the board, not known at the time of posting. Tina, are there any?
None from staff.
Okay, then that only leaves adjournment. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn the November 14th planning board meeting at 8:46.
Motion by Bob. Is there a second? Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Five in favor, none opposed. This meeting stands adjourned until Saturday, November 25th at 8:30 in the morning.